HTB in the master bedroom. And then that.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Monticello City Council to order. Would you please rise and join me in reciting the Fledge of Allegiance and remain standing as Steve Cable from Lodge Church, Livingston, Kirk. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
Foundation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, we are very grateful for you to be in Monticello and how you have blessed it. Father, we pray that the proceedings denied, that you will be a part of that, that you will give vision and wisdom to every person in here who has given their time to make Monticello a better place. We thank you for them, and we pray it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Mr. Reed? Mr. Woodham?
Here.
Mr. Carey?
Here.
Ms. Lively?
Here.
Mr. Piercy?
Here.
Mr. Brock?
Here.
Mr. Broderick?
Here.
Mr. Coon?
Here.
Mr. Burris?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Public participation, in-person participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting and must address counsel from the seat and table provided. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. Is there anyone, Chief? Thank you. Remote participation. This is the opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Our comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conference. Is there anyone tonight more?
There is none.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. This is the approval of documents and action items as listed. Claims report. Claims dated April 23rd, 2024 through May 13th, 2024. Meeting minutes. City council meeting minutes, April 22nd, 2024. Closed session meeting minutes, April 22nd, 2024. Permit report, April 2024. Fire report, April 2024. And police report, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions of city staff? Hearing or seeing none, I'll have a roll call, please.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on.
Hi, excuse me. Hello?
Yes.
Sorry, I had called in before and then I was placed on mute and I was trying to speak. I'm, I'd like to give public comment. I had called in before the meeting started and when I tried to speak, I had been muted by the, by the administrator, whoever is running the, the call meeting.
In the chat is the opportunity to let us know, but you did not let us know.
Who am I speaking to?
Hi, my name is Melissa. I'm a resident of Monticello.
Melissa who?
Melissa Hendrian, H-E-N-D-R-I-A-N.
Well, Morris says she didn't sign up in time, but I will allow it this one time. So please proceed.
Thank you. I, I had called in five minutes before the meeting started and I got to hear you guys talk about all of the boating stuff, but I wasn't able to speak. So I appreciate that you are going to allow me to speak. I have some prepared remarks. So I have been a resident of Monticello since 2019 and I would like to again express my concerns about the Freedom Park Initiative. For both Burke and Freedom Parks, council approved $6 million in the 2024 budget. This includes a $4 million bond to be paid back over seven years, 1.5 million from existing revenues, and $500,000 from gaming revenues to be directed towards both parks. My understanding is that approximately 1.6 million of this would be for Freedom Park. I am not alone in my request to reconsider the plans for Freedom Park. Recent council minutes indicate that many other.
Can I interrupt, please? City council has already, the city council has already determined that we're not doing anything with Freedom Park at this particular point in time. That was several meetings ago.
I thought that that was just that you were not going to do the intent to purchase or the option to purchase the statue, but I do think that the.
As, as far as I know, there's nothing happening with that right now. Am I correct, Mr. Summers?
I believe it was to not purchase the statue.
That's correct. So it's a moot point.
But the park, the park plans, though, were still viable, right, Mr. Summers?
Terry, are they still viable?
We're revisiting the design for Freedom Park.
Right, but there's, there's nothing on, in, on the, on the stove to, to worry about just yet. So there'll be a time for, have a participation later on and you're more than, I'd be happy to listen to you at that time.
Um, am I still allowed to use my five minutes for the funding priorities for the city? Even if I'm, if I'm not speaking of Freedom Park?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so my concern initially started with the Freedom Park, but since we're, that is not currently on the table, there is still that 1.6 million dollars in the budget that was borrowed at a bond, as for bond for both of the parks. So there's still going to be the 1.6 million dollars that will be outstanding or still available for use in the budget, depending on what direction you'd like to take this in. Um, so I'd like to ask you to consider the resident input that has been both solicited by various city departments as well as via informal Facebook responses about funding priorities for the city. These seem to concentrate on three main areas, parks and recreation, infrastructure, and water quality. I'm asking you to consider other options when thinking about what to do with that extra 1.6 million dollars in ways that more closely align with the council-approved City of Monticello Comprehensive Plan, the City of Monticello Strategic Plan, the Outdoor Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and constituent concerns about water quality. When asked on Monticello-specific Facebook group about what people would like to see a hypothetical 1.5 million dollars spent on, an overwhelming number of people expressed their concerns with the water quality that comes into their homes and expressed the desire to have that fixed immediately. Several people also talked about their concern for the very high sewer bills and would like to see those costs offset. Many others would like to see taxes lowered or refunded, and several others asked for the volunteer fire department to be fully funded with the necessary equipment and a firehouse capable of housing the fire trucks properly. I'd also like to mention the proposed repeal of the grocery tax at the state level, and if nothing else, I would encourage fiscal conservatism for if Monticello were to lose a part of that sales tax revenue that we've historically counted on. I appreciate that you were able to let me speak even though I wasn't allowed the first time and also my thoughts are apparently irrelevant with Freedom Park, but I still appreciate the, the ability to engage and to participate in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now it's my turn, right? Mayor's report. The City of Monticello is co-hosting two informational meetings with the Solar Urbana Champagne Group for those interested in exploring options in solar power and geothermal power. Well, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. I'm trying to listen to this meeting. I, I could see if Larry, I'll pause for you. Well, turn your volume up, Steve. The geothermal power hour will be tomorrow, May 14th, at 6:30 PM at the Livingston Center, and the solar power hour will be Thursday, May 16th, 6:00 PM at the Livingston Center. The public is invited and encouraged to attend. Moving on to new business, mayor appointments. I'm pleased to bring this slate to the council for your approval. Alderman at Large, Elaine Yun, one-year term expires April 2025. Planning and zoning board, Martha and Regal, five-year term expires April 2029. Jody Stone, one-year term expires April 2025. Police pension board, Terry Jones, as the annuitant on the committee. And historic preservation, Rachel Woods, three-year term expires April 2027, and Lee Anderson, three-year term expires April 2027. Is there a motion to approve my appointments?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Motion passes.
At this time, the clerk will swear in Elaine Yun so she can assume her table, spot at the table. Elaine lives on Fur Court, I think, which is out in the Evergreens. She's been quite active on the PZV Planning and Zoning Board and I'm glad I was able to appoint her this.
Are you ready? All right. You can feel like, okay. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Alderman at Large.
Of the office of Alderman at Large.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome, council. Thank you. Yeah. And then your seat is right there.
Moving on. Ordinance 2024-25 and an ordinance amending Title 11, Chapter 111 of the Monticello City Code of Ordinances concerning Class B and H liquor licenses. Callie.
Mayor, Bucks Pond Properties LLC purchased the property at 219 West Washington Street earlier this year and has started substantial renovation upstairs and then Winfield House discontinued operation, I guess, this past weekend. They're going to start on the first floor. They have plans for Legends Corner LLC to open a restaurant with an indoor bar and outside patio. The applicant has requested a Class B liquor license and a Class H, which is the outdoor seating liquor license for the establishment. They do have plans to put video gaming in there similar like it was before, except I believe it'll be further in the back. But the background check on the applicant has cleared and the property is eligible for those liquor licenses. If you may remember, earlier this year, we changed the, or the council approved the code to reduce the number of available liquor licenses. So that way, every applicant has to come before the council and ask, and that is what they are doing today. James Hellmuth with the, as a property owner and also representing the business that is requesting the licenses is here if you have any questions.
Questions, comments? Pretty quiet. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2024-25 and ordinance amending Title 11, Chapter 111 of the Monticello City Code of Ordinances concerning Class B and H liquor licenses?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Once again, any comments or questions before we vote? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Yep. Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
And Ms. Young?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 2024-26, Resolution for Maintenance Under the Illinois Highway Code. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. The memo in front of you has a attached resolution that requests the use of motor field maintenance monies from our annual seal-to-ful oil and chip program for this year. The city council approved using $75,000 in line item 0155173-22 for the 2024 oil and chip program. The supporting documents that I submitted would give were the estate form, the BLR Form 14220, a map of the streets we're doing this year, and the public notice that we are putting online, wanting to get closer to alert the public to our potential soil and chip for certain streets. Mr. Summers will sign the item from council action. It's recommended the city council discuss and approve Resolution 2024-26 as presented to the council.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-26, a resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions of Jim? Pretty straightforward. It's an annual event.
Need to do it.
Go ahead and you roll call.
Okay. Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Resolution 2024-27, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a license agreement by, by and between the City of Monticello and Paramdam Incorporated, Extreme Entertainment LLC, Jackson Property Development LLC, 200 Washington, Jackson Property Development LLC, 204 Washington, Jack and Harleen Swing, I Swing Trust, Harleen Swing, Balance and Beauty LLC, Ella Property Development LLC, 220 Washington, and Bucks Pond Properties LLC. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
Still moved.
Well, maybe I'll let Callie talk first. Sorry, I'm ahead.
Oh, yeah. I.
That was too easy.
Took the bait.
But it's.
It took the bait. Good job. Go ahead, Callie.
Well, as I know, many of you have heard, there's a bit of a garbage situation in what we call the subway parking lot. There are nine, well, eight different property owners, but when fully built out, and the entire blocks like under construction. But when fully built out, you'll have 17 businesses and 16 residential units. So between the eight property owners and those other applicable businesses and residents, there's a lot going on. Anywhere in the past several years, there's been between two and five dumpsters placed in various locations, not usually dropped where they were picked up at. As ownership changes of the haulers and the businesses, it just creates a situation where dumpsters are taking up spaces. We seem to be having some turf war issues over there as well, and it's just not a good situation overall. So every single property owner has asked the city and some of you to get involved, and we've been investigating the best option for this, to kind of remedy it. So last month, well, I guess more than that, and March 11th, Mr. Summers kind of gave you an overview of what we were thinking. It's a license agreement with all the property owners, including now Bucks Pond Properties, because the totes that were alongside Market Street on the 219 West Washington Street building has, have long been an eyesore from the city side, and this would help alleviate that as well. So every single one of those property owners that does not have an option to put a tote on private property would be utilizing this dumpster area in license agreement. The plan is the city would construct the enclosure. It would be built to accommodate up to three dumpsters. We're going to start with two, I believe, dumped, emptied out twice a week, and then we have the ability to add another if we need to, or increase the dumping up to three times a week. The fee structure is based on the capacity of the existing dumpster requirements that they have, and then a 5% maintenance fee. We're not looking to make money, but we do need to build and maintain everything there. So the term agreement is, excuse me, the term of the agreement is for three years with a renewal option. And all information was passed to, preliminarily, to the property owners. Every single one that I heard from, and I believe Jim did as well, was excited to get this going so we could get a couple more parking spaces back and not have dumpsters on casters moved out of the way if somebody wanted that spot, just creating a fun situation. So.
Thank you.
I would, if I were at the gym, Jim and Callie have worked hard on this with attorney Greg Jones for several months, and our refuse hauling that we had a contract with Republic Services is solely residential. So they don't provide commercial service, and they're still not providing it yet today. So this would be, I believe, with, with GFL. And the reason the city is more than willing to get involved is it's our municipal parking lot. It's our property. We're not getting involved with other commercial endeavors. This is just our property is the reason we're assisting in the manner we are.
I agree with what Callie was saying. To go ahead and clean up Market Street, I mean, it's beautification in my, in my mind. I mean, that dumpster off of Market, it won't, eyesore will be gone.
Is there any more comments or questions?
Are we building and maintaining this situation? Is that pile of wood in the parking lot down there what that's going to be built out of, or do we not have wood there yet?
It's not ours.
Not ours. It's kind of a construction going on and that plus the goods.
Someplace else?
Yeah.
But we will build and maintain.
Yeah, so the plan.
Custom for the dumpsters.
Yes.
Truck backs into it and damages up to us to fix it.
So part of the requirement is obviously the appropriate insurance. So if something like that were to happen, we would be covered as well. The, the plan tentatively is the city would build the enclosure this year, and then next year, we'd be refinishing the subway parking lot, which I know some of you have been on council for a long time. I've seen that come and go many times, and we are going to accomplish it, hopefully.
I would highly recommend you put some concrete protection at the corners. Not the GFL's not a good backer, but you just never know.
Well, just to that point real quick, yeah, the, it'll have a unique corner post, much like we did at the impound lot or there. You hit that, you break whatever you're hitting it with, not that. To Callie's point, we're going to look at a more permanent type, pretty structure. We haven't gotten that far because this is just the first step in doing it.
I understand.
Getting all the kids to play nice.
Thanks for your consideration. Appreciate it.
Is recycling a separate issue or is it?
Recycling isn't offered by commercial haulers.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-27?
I had one. I had it first.
You got more of you. Okay, well, that's good. Go ahead, roll call.
Or we can do it over.
No, that's okay.
Second, though.
Second, Mike? Thank you.
We said something to you.
You ready for the vote?
I am.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Older persons reports. We'll start with Mike Coon.
I, I, they, they, public participation brought up the 1% grocery tax. So I just wondered from Terry's perspective if we, what, how that would, could potentially impact us and what, if there's any plans to figure out a way to overcome that revenue source.
Well, that's the struggle with state fiscal, different than our fiscal, because we don't exactly what to expect from the state of law.
Yeah.
Callie and I have talked a couple of different times, trying to estimate the impact that that would have on us, and it's not an easy answer to what impact that will have.
Okay.
I think with our, you know, we normally budget revenues fairly conservatively, so that will be in our favor. So I hate to say time will tell, but.
Right.
Yeah, we've, we've talked about that.
That's all I got.
That's it?
Yeah. Um, I'm good.
Thank you.
Other Mr. Murray?
Tom?
Nothing. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Young.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
At Large, that's, that's what I got tonight.
There's something that I don't remember.
Thank you for.
What?
Saying to serve. Do you have anything? Brian?
Nope, nothing tonight.
No, sir.
Andrea? Okay, moving on, let's have the police chiefs report. Chief Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This week is police week, so we have a cookout planned for Wednesday night for the officers and show our appreciation to them. Officer Wahlberg completed a three-day use of force course last week that state mandated. It covers everything from use of force, scenario-based training, so it gets all the requirements done for that. She is good for three years of use of force. Officer Kearney completed a one-week course for firearms and the step to get his firearm instructor certificate. We did enter the traffic safety challenge for anyone freaks out or on certain platforms spouts off about it. This is not a toasters-for-tickets program. This goes largely on public information and education. If you see a lot of static lanes, for please put on your seatbelt, be careful around trains. We throw out train whistles for the homecoming parade, which is a real treat to the middle school teachers. Those are the type, type of things that we try to do in the talk to our set classes to try to get the message out of traffic safety. I would say maybe 15% of that is actually the enforcement part of it. A lot of it goes off of policies, procedures, and kind of what we do to try to lower injuries and fatalities on the roadway. When I did this for Atwood, we actually won a fully equipped squad car. You can get a lot of equipment if you qualify for that, so this is our first year, so fingers crossed. Also, older persons, if you start getting your phones blown up because people are soliciting, please encourage them to call us right away. Do not wait a few hours, a few days, a few weeks. I can't do much after that. We've been pretty well off on getting solicitors to either register, follow the rules, or they end up getting about a $250 ticket. We did have one appeal, me revoking their solicitor permit that was heard last week This is not out of nowhere. We tell solicitors, we have rules, you have to follow them if you choose not to do that. If you violate the no-knock list, then you risk having a ticket and getting your permit revoked. And that's just because we have a lot of people that don't want to be bothered. In one instance that we had a few weeks ago, they have a special needs child at the home that they do not want anyone to bother. So these are the reasons why we have the no-knock list, and if people violate that, then they can expect a ticket. Please encourage, if anybody reaches out to you, please have them call us and we can take care of this. That's all that, Mr. Murray.
Thank you. Fire chiefs report, John Rupke.
Mayor, congratulations. Congresswoman.
Congresswoman.
Congratulations on your appointment.
Good pay big time.
We ran 52 calls last month and we're up to well over 200 calls so far in April. One of the calls we ran through was a mutual aid call in Beatty, and they had a garage house fire. Fortunately for us, or not for us to be met, we were the first ones there. The train had stopped in the middle of the track that cut the town in half. Fire department couldn't get through, so Beatty, Sarah Gordon couldn't get through. I saw it got there first and pretty much got the fire out. So congratulations to us because we, we got there in time, but we had some pretty frustrated firemen to be met, Sarah Gordon and so forth. But it really shows how we work together, that we were able to get there, help them out, and no loss of lives, a little bit of loss of property, but it was a pretty interesting call. got there first and pretty much got the fire out. So congratulations to us, because we got there in time, but we had some pretty frustrated firemen in Beaumont and Sarah Gordon and so forth. But it really shows how we work together, that we were able to get there, help them out, and no loss of lives, a little bit of loss of property, but it was a pretty interesting call. So we also had a small crossbase fire in Grandview Estates. Some electrical equipment had shorted out and started firing the crossbase, and we got that out. We had to hold their floor to get to it, but pretty much got it out. The train last month, we did a briefing on the two fires that we had. It's always good to go over them so that we can, you know, learn from every call, especially fire calls. Same night, we're talking about situational apparatus placement. When we go to a scene, whether it be a fire, medical, suicide attempts, anything else, there's always a good strategy on where to place your vehicles, where to place your firemen, and so that we're just ready to go when these things happen. Second week, we did pre-planning at the Monticello Square, which is always important. I don't want to say if it happens or when it happens, but if there's ever a big fire in that square, it's going to be, it'll be major. So we always are training to look at what would happen if something happened on that square. Part of what we do, too, is we try to pre-plan all the businesses in Monticello. So going to a business, we have an idea of what's in it, where all the utilities are, if there's any dangerous equipment in there, chemicals, especially like also residential where there could be special needs, could be elderly people that we need to know if they're in there, so we know attack that building, we know what we have to do. The third week, we did vehicle maintenance, which we do every month. We make sure we keep our vehicles in good shape, go over the tools, start up everything, make sure everything's good. A couple activities we did in April, we did a fire drill at the middle school. Some firefighters went to the FDIC conference in Indianapolis, where we get to look at new equipment, talk to the firefighters, and learn things. It was a day trip. So it's always good learning. We also are involved by county emergency planning committee, all the different emergency units, schools, and so forth. We get together on a quarterly basis and talk about any potential emergencies that could happen within our county. It could be man-made, it could be weather-related and so forth. We try to go over scenarios of what we need to do if something happens. And finally, I want to give a big shout out to Callie. Callie got us a grant of $22,000, and she should appreciate that. I know the citizens of Monticello are doing it. Certainly their members of fire department. So thank you, Callie.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, John. Appreciate it.
City administrators report. Terry? Just short and sweet tonight. Congratulations, Elaine. Not only is she a steadfast member of the Planning and Zoning Board, she was also one of the key individuals on the review committee for the Business Improvement Grant. So her help with that committee and serving on the PZB is greatly appreciated. Pretty important job, and she did well. So that's